This conference will now be recorded.
Chair Truax, I was going to save these comments for the end of the meeting. However, we have a special guest here tonight, so I figured I would introduce him and also explain to you why he's here. So, the town has hired a new town manager, Gene Foxworth. He's in the back row here tonight. You all will surely get to know him very well in the coming years. And he will begin work with the town on May the first. Gene has a wealth of experience in local government, including in the planning and development regulation field, and also most recently served as assistant county manager for Carteret County. He left the county to go into the private sector and will now be returning to be the town manager in Cape Carteret effective May 1st. I've known Gene for more than a decade, had a great working relationship with him when I was in Emerald Isle, and then also when I was in Cape Carteret and he was with the county. So have every confidence that he will serve the community well and assist the planning board and the board of commissioners in achieving your goals going forward. So Gene's here, and glad to have him here, getting a head start, learning.
Good morning.
So I, as for me personally, I had been planning on retiring in August of this year and was actually getting set to inform the board of commissioners about that. Some things happened in Emerald Isle, and there's a lot of speculation about that position and perhaps my return there. At this point, I do not know if that will happen or will not happen, but I did want to be upfront and honest with the mayor and the board of commissioners and everyone in Cape Carteret. So I decided to let them know a little bit earlier than I might have otherwise about my retirement in August. But what I let them know is if there's an opportunity for me to go back there and that comes to fruition, then I would be leaving a little bit sooner, and that I would certainly provide at least 30 days' notice to Cape Carteret and more if possible. And I'm certainly happy to help you all, the mayor, the board, the staff, Gene, any way that I can going forward, whether I'm here or whether I'm gone or whatever I'm doing later this summer. So all of that is a long-winded way to say that I expect to be here until August. However, I may leave sooner than that if there's another opportunity that presents itself. But despite the rumors and the speculation, there is no definite decision made on anything other than me retiring in August. But Gene, glad to have you here.
Thanks, Frank.
So thank you for obliging me. I was going to tell you all this at the end of the meeting, but Gene's here.
Thank you.
Gene, I'd like to thank you for being here tonight with the planning board. I'd like to take the opportunity, if you'd like to speak to them or anything.
Sure. I'm really excited to work with you all. I'm very pleased.
Yeah, I got to the microphone.
Sorry, I thought I was talking. I don't know.
So one lesson, these microphones don't amplify your voice, they simply record it on the computer, so that's why we ask people to talk into the microphone.
Got it.
Now, I hope you can get a better microphone system when you're here.
I'll work on that. Yeah, I'm excited to be with you all tonight. I decided to come work with the town of Cape Carteret. I know many of you, worked with many of you in the past, and just excited about the opportunity to continue my professional service in local. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the mayor and the board, they were so excited about the possibility of bringing Gene on. They wanted to get him signed up and locked in for May the first, so that's the reason they made the decision sooner than later. So glad to have him here.
Perfect. All right. I'm calling for approval of the minutes of the February 18th meeting. Do I have a motion on the approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All in favor? Julie, not sign those. Thank you. Is there any public comments? Does anyone sign up? No? We'll move to the next issue, the ordinance, text amendment request for B-20 zoning district, minimizing lot size for a church. And Frank, would you like to talk about that?
I'll let Julie introduce it to you, and we also have the applicants here tonight that may want to make some comments as well, and I'll chime in as appropriate.
Okay.
Okay. Island Church of Emerald Isle is currently under contract to purchase a 1.97 acre tract of land, Zone B-20, at the corner of WB McLean Drive and Channel View Court. They propose to construct an 81 by 121-story building for an assembly of 250 persons with 63 parking spaces. The project would have appropriately sized, county permitted septic system, and they would meet the North Carolina and Cape Carteret stormwater permit requirements. There are also setback requirements that they will meet and vegetative buffer requirements. The church would be used for weekly worship and provide classes and assembly space for community activities and other nonprofits as requested and vetted. There are no plans for childcare or private school or cemetery uses. Our UDO has a restriction on the parcel size for the church, and that is in for the B-20 zone. You have, the restriction is for a minimum lot size of three acres for a church. The church, Island Church, has submitted a text amendment application to amend the section of the UDO. The rationale is that the restriction applies only to a religious use and appears to be counter to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. There's a quotation at the bottom of the page there that is the language of that act. Also, I want to bring to your attention, in looking at North Carolina governmental interpretation and application of Public Law 106-274, the School of Government has identified several factors that should be considered. Land use regulations must be based on secular land use impacts rather than a concern about a religious belief. Regulations should be applied equally to religious and secular land uses. Land use regulations should be neutrally applied to all religious uses with similar land use impacts, and there should be an appropriate balance between the burdens imposed on religious practices and the benefits secured for governmental interests. The School of Government also kind of did a survey of local governments in North Carolina, and you can see at the bottom of page two of the summary. Churches are allowed by right in 10 of 28 zoning districts in Charlotte. These are just random locations. In Raleigh, churches are allowed as a general use in 24 of 26 districts. In Fayetteville, churches are allowed in 15 of 18 districts. And it seemed that where there were concerns about the size of churches, it had to do with a mega church with lots of cars in the midst of a quiet residential area. And that's where maybe a lot size or just proximity to type of arterial connection was a priority, and that might have been why some places had special use permits for churches in residential zoning districts. But by and large, there were no restrictions in commercial districts, commercial, industrial, institutional.
So in Cape Carteret, we actually allow churches in all of our zoning districts. The only distinction that we make in the UDO is that if it's in a residential zone, it has to have a parcel size of five acres or greater. If it's in a commercial zone, it has to have a parcel size of three acres or greater. There are very, very few instances throughout the UDO where we talk about the parcel size for a particular use. I think the only other reference that we make is for a family amusement and entertainment center. It talks about having 10 acres for something like that. So these are really the only uses that we specify a minimum lot size on. The applicants would very much like to go forward and purchase the land and build a church there, but with the current UDO language, they would not be permitted to do that. So the question before you all tonight is, should we amend the UDO to eliminate that requirement altogether, which is basically how we handle most uses in the UDO? Or is there some compelling public policy reason that we should keep that minimum lot size requirement for a church? They certainly have brought to light the Religious Land Use Act that Julie referenced. That's certainly a consideration going forward. That is a question probably best left for the town attorney and best left for the board of commissioners to make that ultimate determination. I think the question for the planning board tonight is from a policy perspective, do you think that we should require churches to have at least three acres, or are you comfortable with some smaller land use size for churches? They submitted a draft site plan, really just for informational purposes. If the ordinance is amended and we do allow churches on a, for example, a 1.97 acre site, they will be required to go through the formal site plan review process that any other entity goes through. And so there'd be a site plan prepared, it'd be reviewed by the staff, it would come to the planning board, and then ultimately to the board of commissioners. That several-step process would take place after the ordinance is amended, amended, if it's amended, so.
Couple of questions I have is, why is, why is there a restriction on acreage? I mean, I guess if you're, if you meet the requirements, it is a normal business. I guess my question is, why is there a three acre and a five acre minimum thing for a church? That's what I'm just curious on, like, why?
So the truthful answer is, I do not know. Perhaps some of the folks who've been in the community longer than I have may have some insights on that, but I do not know what the town's rationale was for that requirement. I think it's been in place for many, many years. I think it probably makes some sense in a residential zoning district because obviously there's potential for conflict. But on the flip side of that, a church is probably about the nicest neighbor you could have, right? Usually, usually people aren't too upset about being next to a church. So I don't know the specific rationale for it, but that's really the question for you all to opine on tonight, is should we have that or should we not? Or should it be some other number?
A couple of points. I included an excerpt from the US Code in your packet, but I failed to include the most important paragraph. So I have copied that paragraph, section of the land use, and that's a favor for to. And also, Thomas Stewart is here tonight, if you would like to ask him any specific questions.
Madam Chairman, if I could just make an observation.
Yes, ma'am.
The reason we are given these agenda notebooks is so we have time to study and understand. And I, for one, am not comfortable trying to get through this right now, tonight. Although I do not know why there is a three acre requirement, but what concerns me more is the, it seems to me we're doing it a little understand your words in that, that there's no point in going further with engineered plans and so forth unless the minimum is taken away. But I feel the opposite, that I would like to see the plan for this size parcel or the septic, the stormwater, the parking and the building before I even consider reducing the requirement for three acres. That's just my personal opinion.
Kind of on that same page as well.
Well, the only thing I would caution you about is if the planning board and ultimately the board of commissioners decide to amend the UDO, it would apply everywhere in the town. It will not be limited to just this parcel.
Understood.
And so you should consider that requirement and whether we should keep it or get rid of it in the context of any parcel in the town.
But this, the way I look at it is, this would be a good example of, for kind of learning and understanding, I mean, I hate to say it like this, but it would be a good representation of what, what could happen on this size lot for churches, Frank. I kind of, and without reading, having time to read all this, I mean, I hate to say this, but I would love to table this this month, allow us time to sort of read through some of this other stuff and bring it up at the next month meeting. I mean, I-
You certainly can do that if that's your, if that's your prerogative. But what I would say to you is, the question about the Religious Land Use Act, that's probably a much more detailed legal analysis that would, that would need to be undertaken. And so like, for example, it definitely says that you can't treat a church differently than some other commercial use, for example. However, the degree to which we treat different uses differently plays into that. So it's not a simple yes or no determination, that yes, we're in violation of the law, or no, that we're not. And so that's why I think ultimately, if that becomes a concern for the board of commissioners, you know, the town attorney will provide the appropriate guidance on that. I would just encourage you all as the planning board, just to consider the policy implications here. You actually said it perfectly, like, why do we have this? Do we need this? And so that's kind of really the question for you, whether or not, I don't think that you can technically or legally require the applicant requesting the ordinance amendment to present a full-blown site plan and so forth. They provided sort of an early draft version conceptual plan. I think everything that we have discussed with them to this point, and we've reviewed all of the potentially applicable ordinances, I think that it's certainly possible they can meet the town's parking, stormwater, setback requirements and so forth. So I think the question for you all is, do we want churches on small parcels, or do we want them on larger parcels?
Well, I, you know, the town has worked so hard for all these, I know it's five for a residential area and three in the business area, but I don't think that we should go and change the planning board from three acres to 1.97, you know, for them to build on.
It would just be us changing it to there not being an acreage restriction. It would just be that, there would be no restriction in a commercial zone area as long as they meet every other policy. I mean, that's, I believe, what they're asking for, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, that's correct, but you certainly, as a board, may decide, no, we think it's important that they meet the three acre requirement, or something else. I mean, that's really your discretion tonight, so.
I guess my question would be-
Well, my personal opinion is that the three acres is the ordinance, and we shouldn't be bending ordinances that are set in place.
We wouldn't be bending it, we would be removing it. It would be my understanding. Am I correct with that?
Yeah.
I think it's also that church-
Succumb to our town. That's not-
For me.
I guess the real question for me is the why?
Was it initially the judge?
Yes.
And without really anybody's ability to tell me the why?
Yeah.
I have questions. I love a church coming to town. Absolutely wonderful.
So I apologize, I just do not know the why and haven't found anyone who does know the why at this point in time.
But we do know that's, as we speak, it's three acres.
In the, in the business 20 zone, yes, it's three acres. So, yeah, I mean, you certainly can take some more time if you'd like to better learn the why. You know, as I mentioned earlier, these are the only land uses that we specify a large lot size, with the exception of something like Mac Daddy's, which says 10 acres.
Then, I may ask, since we do have representatives here with us tabling it, what do you think?
Yeah.
How would you negatively be impacted by a tabling of the board?
Well, I'll be, hello, everybody. Appreciate, my name's Tom Stewart. I'm here with Selby Brewer from Island Church of Emerald Isle, and appreciate you looking at this, and give regards from pastors Paul Ortiz and Charlie Miller, who couldn't be here tonight. To answer your question directly, we are in our free look, or due diligence, as they say in the residential property, but free look in the commercial, and that does expire. We might be able to get extensions for that. It's 120 days, we're under contract, so that goes until June 20th. We might be able to get an extension, but to, it does start impacting Critical Path. We've already invested the sunk, the cost to do a survey so we could start on engineering drawings, expecting a positive outcome tonight. And that would then just push it another month, which pushes things another month. So that, I hope we answered your question. If I can, to help clarify, I've just got the two points, because I was with you, thinking the same way when we first got this, until we came upon this act. And this is the Religious Land Use and Act of 2000, so maybe the ordinance was written before then, when this act wasn't in place.
I think it certainly was written prior to 2000.
Okay. It's very short, and the first two, the first paragraph has two points, which we put in on our application, which was part of the package. One was that there needs to be a governmental purpose to have that and have a least burden to have this restriction. And for, for simple minds like myself, they actually, this is all from the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division, and to summarize everything, they actually had a brochure, which is something I always like, and right at the bottom of page two of the brochure, and Julie has this and can provide it, and I don't think it was in your package, but I brought it along because it was simple speech. It says it bars, this act bars governments from totally or unreasonably excluding religious assemblies, institution, or structures. And they have a, for example, and if you don't mind me just reading the two sentences, "A town enacts a law requiring that houses of worship must be located on parcels with a minimum acreage, but parcels of that size are unavailable or prohibitively expensive." And they absolutely are in this area. They're more than double for anything that's over three acres in this area. And for our size, meaning all the other zoning, that was, that was, we said, this is perfect. We're a small church. We hope to grow to maybe about 200, but we're trying to size for 250. We're hoping to use this also for other assemblies, evening classes for other people. We have lots of people. We're currently a church out of a box, if you know what that means. We set up every Sunday, and we break down every Sunday at the rec center at Emerald Isle. So having uses during the week, we're all very excited about. The second other provision that jumped out, and it's in your package on the first page, is that, is that equal treatment. You can't treat a religious use of the land different than another use. And to me, for a simple example, I guess it would be as if I was in the VFW, and I am a veteran, and I wanted to have a VFW assembly area, I could build it, but a church can't because of the restriction of the lots. So that's what I just wanted to bring up. So I appreciate, we would appreciate moving forward as quickly as possible so we don't affect-
Sir, may I ask you-
Sure.
Repeat the first, what ruling on the land?
The-
That you just spoke to us about the size of the land.
I was reading from the brochure, was that what it was?
Yeah.
I was reading from the brochure, which isn't the exact language from the law. What they, they were saying that the Religious Land Use Act bars land use regulations that substantially burden religious exercise, except where there's a compelling government interest, and then that interest is pursued in the least restrictive way possible. That's the language. And one of the examples, of which they do many, was that, you know, having a law that requires churches to have a larger lot size and, but not anybody else, a secular organization that might have an assembly or classrooms or office space.
Currently, we don't have any of those, correct? Frank? Any of what? Organizations that you, that buy, buy?
So what-
Case the rule on it.
We certainly allow other large gathering places in the UDO. You know, for example, we allow large private recreation centers, something like the Aquatic Center. We allow movie theaters. We don't allow, we don't have any in town, obviously, currently, but we would allow a movie theater. And on those other similar type uses that might bring a large number of people together for one event on a regular basis, we don't have any other minimum lot size requirements in the UDO.
Except the 10 acres you mentioned.
For, for Mac Daddy's, yeah, for, for a family entertainment venue. But that, but that's also a little bit different in the sense that it gets into, gets into the, gets into the driving range and the go-kart track and all of those kinds of things.
The corner center, how many acres is that?
I don't know exactly how many acres they're sitting on, but we don't have any similar acreage requirement for something like that. So they would be allowed to go on a two-acre track, for example, so.
But you might, and one interpretation is, the area such as Mac Daddy's is burdened even more than the, than the church by virtue of requiring 10 acres or something of that nature. So it's not discrimination against a church. I think it's-
It's like, yeah, I mean, I don't want, yeah. I don't want to think the planning board is against-
And so that's why I would just encourage you all to reserve the legal judgments for the town attorney and for the board of commissioners. I think they're compelling arguments both ways. I think they have a compelling argument, but it's not that cut and dry and that simple. It's going to get into an analysis of some of the things we've been talking about, about a movie theater, or an aquatic center, or a Mac Daddy's, or what have you. That's why I would just encourage you all to focus on just the policy issue here. Do you think it's acceptable for a church to be on a two-acre track, or maybe even a one-acre track, or whatever, you know, lot size exists? Or do you think there is a compelling public policy goal to require those to be on three acre tracks or larger?
Well, I guess my question would be, would they meet every other, obviously, they would have to meet every other, every other setback, every other rule, every other-
Yeah, I think the assumption, the assumption at this point is that they could meet all of the other applicable requirements. Obviously, we would review that as part of the site plan review, but I don't think they would be here tonight making this request if they didn't have some level of confidence that they should be able to meet the other requirements, and that's why they provided the draft site plan for you.
I just wish I knew why they had the three acres, not the five acres.
I think, I think we should table it and let our attorney, you know, our, our regulations is three acres, okay?
I don't think that's-
And then let him look at it and see if there's an issue. I mean, it's been set.
Yes.
Do you want to go down to 1.97?
Yeah, again, I don't think it would be appropriate for the town attorney to be advising at this stage of the game. I think it's absolutely appropriate for him to advise the board of commissioners if and when this ever gets to them. But he encouraged me to encourage you to focus on the policy question and not the legal question, so.
So it's, it's not about whether or not they're even having a church. It's about, it's about removing the three acres on a religious organization.
Just three acres.
Because if that's what our rules say, am I understanding that correctly?
May I ask a question, Madam Chair? If another entity was to buy this and build that exact same building for an assembly plus other spaces in their office spaces and rented it to a church, would that be appropriate according to the ODS, the UDO?
I don't believe so, because it's still the land use of a church. Now, if someone else built a retail strip shopping center there, for example, that three acre requirement does not apply to something like that. But, but if they built it and leased it to you and the land use was a church, that three acre requirement would come into play.
But if they, but if it was already built, would be my question, and now you're going to tell a lease?
But, but, but again, the, the UDO basically regulates the use of the land, regardless of who owns it. So if, like, for example, if someone leased an existing building in town right now for some other use that's not allowed, we would not allow that.
But for instance, if, if it was built as a retail shopping center, right? And it met all the requirements, and then somebody came in and said, well, I want to lease it as a church. Now, how does that fall? Because it was built as a retail shopping center. Do you understand what I'm, I'm just asking the question?
Yeah, so I, it's, probably everything needs to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, but for example, we allow churches in the B-20 zoning district, right?
Yeah.
Now, we'd have to take a look at the total acreage of the parcel that the church is on and make a determination at that point. Honestly, I could not tell you right now whether we'd look at the whole parcel being three acres or just the portion reserved for the church. three acres or just the portion reserved for the church. And this is unusual requirement. We don't typically have these, we don't have anything else like this in the UDO except for the definition of a family entertainment center, so.
And I guess my question is, why do we have it in there? That's just my question.
I think that's a reasonable question.
I'd like to table, table it on, I don't, personally don't want to change the acreage right now, unlike the table. How does anyone else feel? At one point, one acre of land is a lot of land.
I don't think they're asking, we're not being asked whether or not this church is, it's just, are we removing?
I'm talking about the changing the rule period.
Yeah, are we, but.
I'm just talking about the changing of the rule period.
I guess my question is, why do we have the rule is what I'm just trying to understand.
Well, currently, we have the rule. And I don't feel like we should change the rule.
What can we do if it's tabled a month? What can we do to help you get a legal interpretation of this federal law? To help you out with the thoughts, or I?
Well, I think maybe Julie, since she gave us this other piece of paper, should do some more research on.
Ma'am, I apologize for interrupting. The statement that I handed you is already in your notes. This is just, it's just the entire document. The thing that I had included at the back only had part of it. But this, everything, every word that is at the beginning of this new handout is already in your document.
Right.
It's already there, so you've already had a chance to review it.
So again, I've discussed the issue with the town attorney and the town attorney would prefer that the legal judgments be made at the Board of Commissioners level of review as opposed to the planning board level of review. I think there are certainly compelling arguments on both sides of the argument with regard to the Religious Land Use Act. Again, I think it's really a question for you all, again, the policy, like, should we require churches to be on larger parcels? Or should we not? I think by default, they're going to end up on a relatively large parcel anyway to be able to accommodate the building size and the parking and stormwater, whether or not we should say three acres, or two acres, or six acres. That's, that's kind of the question, or no acreage.
Five acres.
Whatever, correct.
If they meet all the other guidelines, I guess that's the whole question I'm asking.
Five acres of residential area.
So what's any of y'all's thought?
I'd like to, I'd like to table it or give it to the commissioners.
Well, we would, we would have to vote to disallow it and then it's up to them to vote on it, whether they wanted it or not wanted it. It's the way we would have to proceed.
Is that correct, Frank? We would have to.
Yeah.
Send it to the commissioners on the ordinance of the three acres.
You all can certainly table it if you would like to take more time to maybe better understand the history or the rationale for that rule. That's certainly an acceptable action for you to take tonight. You certainly could recommend that the Board of Commissioners amend the ordinance and remove that restriction. You certainly could recommend that they not remove that restriction and keep that intact. In any event, we'll bring your recommendation forward to the Board of Commissioners.
By us delaying or tabling it one month, bringing it up next month, this essentially then would also then go.
That, that's right. Yeah, that's right. You certainly can take as much time, you should take as much time as you believe you need to make a judgment, so.
For them.
And you'll have to consider that.
Can we, can we vote to send it straight to the commissioners right now as we speak?
You can, if you like. You can, you can make a motion, you can consider a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance amendment or recommend denial of the ordinance amendment.
If we deny it, then we could send it to the commissioner.
Or we could send it and it's up to them either way, anyway.
Correct.
So I guess my question, I was trying to get your, so.
Oh, no, you're good. I'm in agreement with just why this is the only zoning acreage that's defined in the UDO. I'd like to know why.
Other than, other than the family.
Other than, yes, the family park.
Sir, may I ask you, have you looked at other land, at three acres?
We've been, we've been looking for several years and in this area, the three acre parcels are two and a half times, which falls right into the first restriction on us is that it's prohibitively expensive just to get land that's more than that size. And because we're never going to grow to be a big church, we're a planting church. So once we get in a bigger size, we're going to go plant another church someplace because we love the size of a smaller church, less than 200, 150 is actually probably too big, I think. So you feel like a family. This two acre parcel with all the setbacks and we're going to maximize green space, we've already looked at trees that we're not going to touch and buffers, it works out great for us.
Where else have you looked? Where have you priced in Cape Carteret?
Well, the only other parcels for sale are, are across the road and they are like 1.2 million.
Across the road?
Yeah, across the road on the, on the corridor on the other side of 24. We have looked in Cape, in Cedar Point, we've looked up in Pelletier, but you know, we were, we were, and of course, we were looking at Emerald Isle and we're priced out completely there, even renting in Emerald Isle.
So where you say across the road?
Is it the corner line?
What size parcel did you look at? You said 1.2 million?
Well, we're looking at any, yeah, anything over three acres to meet with the, that requirement that's listed. It currently listed, it's $1.2 million.
And where is that?
It's across 24, over by the, over by the Handymart, over by the, the pool. That, that area over there is for sale. And of course, the whole new development center that has been approved is, is driving up land prices very quickly.
New development center, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Up by, you know, as you follow past the library, the town, I'm sorry? Taylor Notion, up on Taylor Notion.
But who have you asked? Who, who owns the $1.2 million property that you've inquired about?
I, ma'am, I, I'm not the realtor for, for the church. They've been looking, anything that's been for sale and like that. We, we are both realtors and so we see what comes up for sale.
I'd be very interested to know the name and contact information of your realtor.
My realtor?
The church realtor.
Yes, his name is Selby Brewer, he's sitting right here and he'll be happy to come on up here and, and look.
What land on Taylor Notion, sir, was for sale?
There was some over by the library at one time.
You're very limited on land.
Yes, sir.
Anything over a million dollars, we got this land, we can't buy anything. Just see it twice of the most of this land. You can't buy it. If anybody's going to sell cheaper, we'll be glad to look at it.
Well, how much are you under contract for if you? Well, I'll certainly spread the word of any people I know with property, either residential or commercial, but I just, for me, the issue is not the church or the, the size of the ordinance. I have other issues which I was going to get into later during the planning board meeting, but the, how are you planning to enter this piece of property? Well, the, the entrance to Country Club Point is not, the entrance to Country Club Point.
To County, yes.
You know.
Right.
The sub.
Yes, ma'am.
Is actually not a recorded dedicated town street.
Okay, so it's a private road.
Well, no, it's not, it's not a road at all. That's the point. It just, Country Club Point, Section 1, recorded in, I'll look at the map book and page in a minute, floats in the air. There's no recorded subdivision or street between Section 1, Country Club Point, and Highway 24. And that's an issue that has recently come to my attention and which needs to be handled by the town and the property owners on both sides in order to dedicate a whatever, 60 foot wide, 50 foot wide, public street.
And ma'am, we would agree with you on that and that would still, if, as if we were one of the owners on that, it would, would be required to improve it, to be dedicated, that still would be cheaper than trying to get another parcel of land in this area to start from square one.
I understand. I'm just saying that this is something that's recently come to my attention personally and that it just needs to be neighbors getting together to.
Yeah, which, which, we're in the process of remedying that situation and formalizing the right of way in that area. So I fully expect we will formalize a right of way in that area consistent with what people have historically used, so.
Let me ask you a question, Frank, on the septic area. Is that by yard work?
We can't work to do that. That's not part of our, what they're asking us to do. They're asking us just to remove the three acre thing and not, not any of the other stuff.
Well, on that sketch that's in your packet, they were planning on putting the septic area up along Highway 24, along that side there. That may change when they get to formal site plan development.
And I think that's what's confusing it is, is instead of it just being brought to us about removing the three acre thing or not, I think that's what's confusing the issue here. It's, it's basically asking us, you know, you've sent us a site plan, but the site plan isn't relevant on the change to the ordinance. We either have to vote to change the ordinance or not change the ordinance, or pass it to the county, you know, excuse me, city commissioners, not county commissioners, city commissioners there to say, hey, it's up to y'all to work this out. It's above our pay grade.
That's right. If you approve, if you recommend and the Board of Commissioners approves this ordinance amendment, any parcel that's owned B20 would no longer have that three acre requirement. So, and that's B20 is most of our commercially zoned properties on 24.
What I was trying to get at, I don't want the church to go purchase a piece of land and then the neighbor says, no, you can't get on, you know, put in paving or whatever.
Yeah, I might, you know, again, I don't, I'm not intimate with their plans, but everything we've discussed to this point, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
And I don't think that's what we're asking to vote on.
I know, we're voting on the three acre reduction. Elimination.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. I have a lot more questions about the, the site plan, but that is not what we're here discussing. It's just the three acres and five acres for the B20 acreage for zoning. And I, I think I'm still, I would love to see another church come to the area. I'm full support of that. I'm just, I'm curious. I don't see it being good or bad or either. I'm, I am just curious as to why that was put. Obviously, it was put in the UDO for some reason and I just want to make sure that we've covered all of our bases and understand that UDO requirement.
It could be because we're a ditch town. We have drainage or sewage or curbing or, there was a reason for that being said, but.
So with 30 days allows us to figure out some more stuff at this point. With 30 days, help us understand maybe more.
Make a motion.
I would just like to say that in preparing this agenda item, I did try to look through the ordinance and history and I, I did not find anything. Nothing, nothing clobbered me over the head and said, ah, this is why we have this. And, and that's why I reflected on what are other towns doing? What's their experience?
And in other towns, it just doesn't have this, right?
And their concern is big churches in residential areas with traffic. And this is in a business area where you already typically have cars.
If they're going into Cape.
Country Club Point.
Channel View.
That is a residential area, though. And that is a concern. And I'm glad you brought that up about entrance to the church because again, I know this is not about the actual discussion, but you know, the traffic and how that's going to become a part would be something as we move forward. Should this go into site plan approval would be something I'd like to discuss more as well.
Well, I don't want to get the cart before the horse. I understand the issue tonight completely. But one of the other requirements is that a site must be adjacent, this is if it's a commercial development or whatever, in the B20 zone. Site must be adjacent to a major or minor thoroughfare. It's doubtful that we would get permission from the state to enter off 24. And if you're having your septic adjacent to 24, even more doubtful because of the Channel View port entrance. But I strongly feel that we need to, to solve the issue of the street before we consider any use, a business strip shopping center, any use that's not adjacent to a thoroughfare.
Can I make a motion to table it till the next meeting? I make a motion, we table it till the next meeting.
Do you have a second? Table it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Is there?
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll figure this out.
Is there something we can do between now and next month?
I'm just, I myself am going to try to figure out why we have the, the rule. That's what I can do. I mean, if I don't, then I can't, then I can't answer that question, you know? But I just have to do my due diligence.
Is there anything you would like us to do at the staff level to help you with that?
Well, Frank, you know, their site plan is the rules about septic being on Highway 24. Is there rules on entering a neighborhood to get into the church? This type of things to help them.
But, yeah, it's not on, we're not voting on this site. We're just voting on whether or not we're allowing churches.
So we, we've already completed a preliminary review with and for the potential applicant and we believe that something generally inconsistent, generally consistent with what you see on the sheet there would be, would be approved and would meet all of the town's requirements.
And I think if we don't see it, if we can't find it by the next meeting, then we push it up to the, again, the people above our pay grade and we let them solve the problem. I mean, that's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, I, I think we have, I think we have full confidence that they can develop a site plan that will meet the town's requirements with the exception of the three acre requirement.
And if, if we can't find anything, then we push it up to them next month and say, it's, it's up to y'all. I mean, that's where I feel where I'm at, anyway.
We will include that on your agenda for your April meeting and bring that back to you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll move to the next item, the ordinance amendment. We've already noted on that. Number six, it's got 25.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't change it.
Well, number five is, is an ordinance really just to simplify the chart of dimensional requirements. There are some confusing provisions in the existing chart. There are also some conflicts and as you know, we've been trying to go through the UDO in a methodical way and eliminate confusion and conflict. So I'll let Julie explain the ordinance amendment to you.
I have made another typo.
I highlighted the type there. Number two, Pay Point. All those numbers get rolling together, don't they, Julie?
They certainly do. Bottom line, on the memo, we added the Town Center zoning district, which obviously had to be added since that was not there previously. And you can see that it's noted as TC on the left-hand column. And we put it, all the appropriate notes relative to the Town Center and they are now in the text and they are also in the various columns for the different setback requirements. Sometimes what we found in reviewing the former document, which is labeled as current in your notebook. there were some notes that didn't refer to anything.
Yeah.
So those should be clearly removed. Okay? And, and I don't even know where they came from or why they were there. The minimum and maximum unit area was deleted because this again is a dimensional requirement of a lot, not of a unit. And it was never mentioned anywhere else in the UDO. So sometimes that was the rationale for deleting things, for cleaning things up. Easement requirements were deleted. It's, they're primarily redundant to the rear yard setback. Okay? There might be an easement for water line, electric line, or whatever in that rear yard setback. So you don't need to say it twice. The easement description for utilities is in the UDO. And this is not supposed to be, this is a chart of dimensional requirements. Some, as I mentioned before, some of them were obsolete. There was a maximum height on a 50-foot wide light lot of 40 feet, but there were no heights provided. So that, underneath the obsolete notes, that note was not needed. And those were, they're at the bottom of the page on the current chart.
The current height's 40, correct?
Correct. Yes.
It's 40 in every district except for.
Business.
For R13, it's 35, and in B20, it's 55. So what we proposed on the updated version is just make it a consistent 40 in all the residential districts. And then to make it a consistent 55 in the commercial and the B20 and B30.
Let me ask you a question. Does that height with bog, plane rules, does that affect our height? Landing strip at bog?
They certainly have concerns, but I don't think our height limits are so low that it's not any concern for them. If we were talking about something much higher, that might become an issue, but we have relatively low building heights even with 55.
We had, we had one house in Bay Shore that remember the height? You remember that?
I think the pine trees are taller than most of the houses we have around here, so.
So our, our goal is to just try to simplify the ordinance and make it easier for everyone to understand, whether it's the, the public or the staff or the board members going forward. And, and you may say that some of these changes, maybe we should do something different. That's perfectly acceptable if you believe that we should tweak something, but the goal was to simplify and clarify. You know, one thing I wanted to point out to you is if you look at the side yard setbacks for the business districts, on the current chart, it says it's a 10-foot setback. But if you look at the notes, it says it's a zero lot line, which is zero. So is it 10 or is it zero? And honestly, we don't know. What we've proposed in the updated chart is to make it five. Now, you may say it should be zero or it should be 10 or some other number, but we, we're just trying to clarify because it's, there's a conflict in the ordinance.
What would, okay, what would be the advantage of it being? I understand what the advantage of it being zero is, but why shrink it from 10 to five? Like what, what's the advantage to that? Is there, is there reasoning behind it? You know, in some of it, it said 10, some of it, it said zero, some of it.
Yeah, so typically in, in commercial zones, it's not uncommon for build, commercial buildings to be very close to one another or right up, butt it up against one another. There's certain fire code requirements that'll come into play as well, but you know, it really, so I think it's reasonable to have a very small or maybe no side yard setback in a commercial zone. Again, it says that it's 10, but then it also says it's zero. And I don't know that we have a preference as to what it should be. We just want to have a clear identification.
Well, that would affect that town center, correct?
So then should it be zero?
Well, that's a great question. So, but the, but the town center, so we incorporated all of the language, all of the requirements that were adopted by the Board of Commissioners last year. We just simply plugged those into the table. So all of the, all of the requirements you see for the Town Center zoning district are completely consistent with what the Planning Board recommended and the Board of Commissioners approved. It just had not previously been inserted in the table.
Okay, I guess my question is, you know, why, why move it from zero to five or, or why move it to five if zero's?
Well, one thing about that zero lot line.
Yeah.
It was stated on the table, but it wasn't explained anywhere in the UDO.
Okay.
So there was no basis for it.
Okay.
I think that carried forward from zoning past zoning.
It might have been deleted from the UDO at some point, but not deleted from this table.
Okay.
And we have no way of tracing back to what it might have meant.
But is there, my question is, is there an advantage to there being zero versus five? I mean, is?
I think certainly that the zero is going to give the applicant more flexibility. It'll give them more flexibility in how they develop their site. And zero would be completely appropriate. Like if you think zero should be the number, we honestly simply split the difference between 10 and zero because it was not clear.
I, I don't personally have thought one way or the other, and that's my problem right here is because I don't have a, a clear thought one way or the other. Am I making the wrong decision to move it from 10 to five or five to zero or zero to five?
We're talking about a side yard setback.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have zero, that would mean the house would be next to you.
No, this is commercial. No, no houses. This is all commercial.
Zero, you have to have a firewall, right?
Yeah.
But that's where you have.
But you have a firewall. Yeah.
So that would probably be three, at least three and a half feet.
Yeah, but then that's irrelevant because now you're going back to the fire rules. You know, I'm just asking. I, and thoughts anywhere else would be wonderful.
I, I think it's a reasonable question, but I think this is a perfect example of the, the weaknesses in our UDO that we're trying to correct. So that's why we're having the conversation with you.
And that's why I'm curious.
I mean, if there are specific ones that you want us to research more, we can do that. But if you feel comfortable with what's before you, then you have the option of moving forward with it.
Okay. I mean.
Does the fire department have any say on this?
Not until abdoonings put into place.
Yeah. I mean, we certainly want to make sure our ordinances are going to promote adequate fire protection and fire suppression and so forth. But I think the, the dimensional requirements that are included here, I think they're reasonable requirements, and I think you can assume that the fire department would be comfortable with them. If you'd like, we'd be happy to talk with them further. But again, we, we're not changing anything. We're simply taking and simplifying the chart.
I'm just asking if, if five's where we need to be or if zero is where we need to be. I truly don't know, and that's why I'm asking for hopefully other input.
And I think the elimination of the verbiage that was not required, it does not go into more detail. It's not seen anywhere else in the UDO. I think that itself is okay to be taken away. I think going into a whole nother conversation would be, you know, what is the appropriate setback?
I'm, I'm down with that.
I'd like to make a motion on the approval.
I think one of us has to make the motion first, right? Make it.
What's that?
Make a motion for the approval to five.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I'll second. All in favor?
Can she second it? Is that okay?
Could I make sure I understood what the motion was? Is it to approve the table as presented?
It is.
You mean to approve this?
This chart.
This whole?
Yeah. To approve the chart, the updated chart of.
And then in the future, come back and look at some of the zero to five thing. That's what I.
Coming back to, you know, revisit the table and make sure they're all in line with how this should best fit our town. But to remove the verbiage that is inadequate for this section of the UDO.
So as I perceived the motion, the motion was to adopt the updated chart as revised and handed out by Julie to you. That's what I perceived, and that includes the elimination of all of the unnecessary language. It also, at least for now, establishes a side yard setback of five feet in the commercial zoning districts. And we certainly can revisit that again in the future if you'd like. And honestly, you certainly could make a decision tonight to make it zero or 10 or some other number. But five was, I don't know that it probably makes that much of a difference either way. To be honest with you, our main goal was just to be clear about what's required and not have any confusion.
I guess once I, you know, and, and I would think in the future, maybe come back and revisit the, the, some of the setbacks to make sure that they're, they're adequate with what today's, you know, moving forward, what is best for the town.
Love to add that to the Planning Board's docket of items because I think that is becoming more relevant in our town, the setbacks in the residential and commercial areas.
Yes. I'd love that as well at some point in the future, maybe not too far in the future. But I know it's, y'all are busy too and got a lot, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie, I want to apologize for my thoughts in our packet, which I studied, and I've highlighted the 35. And I thought, oh, my gosh, we went to such lengths to explain, and here you corrected it. I apologize for my bad thoughts.
All right. So we, we will, we will note the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Board to update the chart of dimensional requirements, and we will present that to the Board of Commissioners at their April meeting for potential adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number six, it's discussing home child daycare, existing land use not aligned with the UDO table of permitted uses.
So this is purely a discussion topic.
Okay. All right.
And bottom line, you know, how is it described today? What's in our ordinance today? What is not in our ordinance today? What do you think needs to be in the ordinance? And then also on page two, just some recommendations that we get updated definitions. Our, our definitions are not consistent with state law. And that we update the table of permitted uses. But this is your topic that you wanted to discuss and, and it's, the staff has no recommendations other than just research.
Right. May I comment, Madam Chair? Yes. I, I asked that it be put on the agenda for a future meeting. Thank you. Simply because it was in, the various uses were allowed in some zones and not the others. So, but I have no dog in this fight. Just wanted to clarify it and understand it. But just as last month, when we were presented with facts for a daycare operator who was not here, I'd like to make sure that anybody who has a daycare is given these to study and have input. Churches, Presbyterian Church has a daycare, the gym has an after-school daycare. I think it would be appropriate for them to have a chance to look at this and tell us what they think.
I think there's a home care.
Cape Carter, Cape Carter has a daycare as well, I believe, but after-school daycare at Baptist Church as well, I believe.
Cape Carter Baptist?
I believe so.
I don't know.
At least the children out there.
Julie, do you know who all has daycares?
No, I don't. The state probably has some sort of list, but we do not regulate daycares. So we're not required to keep any information. Nobody comes in here and files any paperwork with us for a daycare.
Like no business license or anything that's required by the?
Business licenses.
Okay, I know one time, a long time ago, but yeah, there was a thing you had to come to the town and get a license.
So the existing daycare facilities are affiliated with some of the churches in town, and they're permitted as part of the church.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and of course, the gym. Yeah, the gym.
I think there's one on Holly Lake. Still no.
Sure.
But I'll certainly, you know, hand these out to those three that we know of. And anybody else, if we can, you know, hear of anybody else, I'll, you know, send them out to them.
My sense is just for discussion. I would love to have input from the existing daycare providers.
Right, because they pick up children at school. Julie, is there anything that you would like to discuss on the health daycare issue?
Well, my recommendation was that, you know, we update the terms and definitions consistent with state regulations and permit them in appropriate districts.
And I guess the question would be, what would be the appropriate districts?
I have a question regarding the difference between a daycare and a preschool program and how those would be defined differently or if they fall under the same umbrella of the daycare. Because one would be more mandated towards education base, and one would be more towards childcare.
The, on the back of page two, it says the daycare center includes nursery schools and preschools.
I missed the preschool on that. Thank you, Julie.
And then a daycare home may be, you know, more relaxed, so to speak, less, less formal.
Now, it mentions three acres.
I noticed as well. I was like, babe.
That's another three acre.
Yeah.
Number three, centers on a site greater than three acres shall have frontage on a collector or thoroughfare street. So that's a requirement.
Well, no, what it's, what that requirement says is if you're on a site that's greater than three acres, you have to have access to one of those streets. But it would not prevent someone with less than three acres from have, if it's, they can have it if it's two acres, for example. Depends on the location.
And to Frank's point, I think what they're saying, if you are something of three acres or more, that means you're probably going to have more activity, more cars, you know, and therefore the need for the street.
Yep.
Anyone else want to speak?
I think that the updating is very important because the, the well-being of, of our children in this town is paramount. That's first and foremost. So let's get it updated to what current rate today. Out to known childcare facilities.
Right. Like the Presbyterian Church is pretty preschool.
Yeah.
As well as the Baptist.
Yep, Baptist.
All right. If there's any other update you find, Julie, would you update them for the next meeting? The terminology proper?
Bible school conducted during vacation.
Frank, is there anything you see?
No, I, I guess the point I wanted to, so we included this on the Planning Board agenda because it was one of the topics that you all identified that you would like to discuss going forward. So, you know, we're simply trying to characterize what's currently in the UDO and point out some of the issues. You know, I, I think if we do wind up amending this ordinance, I would like to simply refer to the appropriate state regulations or state laws as opposed to trying to list every single requirement that the state has. And any of the existing facilities should already be meeting the state standards. They have to be approved by the state to operate in the first place. But our ordinance is really making a determination about where these particular uses can operate in Cape Carteret. And so we're certainly going to expect that they comply with the appropriate state regulations and so forth. So, and, and you know, we, we pretty much, we allow home child daycare in most of the residential zones right now. We don't allow them in R10 and R10M for some reason. I don't know the reason for that. Yeah, honestly, they would seemingly be as appropriate in those districts as the other residential districts. And then the larger daycare facilities, we essentially allow them in the commercial zoning districts, but not the residential districts, and that seems reasonable for the community. Now, if, if you all would like to do something different, we certainly can amend that. But again, it was really driven by a desire by this board to have a conversation about it.
Yeah, because it's just kind of spotty everywhere.
Okay, update all of it in. Okay, update all of it and make sure we're abiding by the state regulations on this.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Make sure we're abiding by the state regulations on our zoning.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair. Would it be appropriate for us to require any daycare facilities to give us a copy of their state license? That way we'd be off the hook if they have a state license. That's fine.
I mean, I think we certainly could require that if you all would like, for sure.
How do we do that?
I would like that.
We don't know who has daycare.
Well, again, keep in mind that the U D O is going to govern any new daycare facilities or home daycare facilities that may arise in the future. So we are not going to be regulating any of the existing facilities unless we believe they've done something inconsistent with the U D O. But I think certainly going forward for any new facilities, we could absolutely require that they provide a copy of their license and make sure that they're legitimate and meeting the requirements.
But then that's another step for the, for the staff to put another, you know, another burden on top of the staff that maybe it's already sometimes spread a little thin. It's just.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you that, as you've heard me say before, I mean, the U D O is a frustrating document, and we're trying to simplify it wherever we can. So I would just maybe caution you about adding more requirements to it that might run contrary to that goal. But I think certainly we would want to make sure they're licensed.
I agree with that, yes.
They are inspected by.
Yeah, I thought they had to be.
Yeah, so, and the state has the authority to shut them down. We would not have any authority to do any things like a restaurant, you know, we're not the health inspectors of the restaurant. So we can't really take action, take appropriate action.
That was kind of my thought as well, that, you know, it's kind of above our town's requirements and that they are regulated very strictly by the state.
I think as long as we just get everything.
This is the land.
On the correct.
Yes.
Everything updated.
Is there elderly care facility? I'd like to make a motion to update the terminology.
I think we're just.
And the state regulation.
This is just a discussion. She's going to bring it back to us.
Yeah, I'll bring it back at the next meeting and with some proposed language.
Perfect.
Based on the discussion.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, one question I think is important for you all to weigh in on is, do you want to allow the larger daycare facilities in residential zoning districts? We don't currently allow those. We would allow home daycare facilities. And so that's probably the most consequential question for you to consider.
I would say no to that. I think it should be commercial myself, once you get to a larger.
And I think that's in line with a lot of safety precautions for the children of our town. Being in a residential area, there's a lot other, a lot of different things going on than there would be in a commercial zoned area for the safety of the children as well.
Yes.
Be aware that the churches, daycares are in a residential zone.
But they fall underneath, but they fall underneath of a different organization because they're a religious entity.
Yeah, we've considered the ones associated with a church as part of the church. And so those are clearly allowed in commercial zones. But if there was a for-profit commercial daycare facility, I think the applicable question is, do you want those in residential zones or not? Probably don't, I would guess. And then the question, I think the other key question is on the home child daycare. You know, we allow it in three of the residential, four of the residential districts. We don't allow it in the R-ten and R-ten M for some reason. It would seem reasonable to also allow those in R-ten and R-ten M.
Yeah, in all the residential areas, I would think.
Yeah, if we change the three acre issue, would that affect this?
The, no, would not.
For all four needs. Talking about B twenty being changed.
Yeah, so the request tonight was only for the B twenty zoning district and only for churches.
Yeah. And then if they had a daycare at some point in the future, that would then fall underneath the church slash, you know, daycare type organization. That's not.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to change this because the churches are allowed all zoning with a minimum size of three acres. So we're going to have to change that if we change the other.
No, no, churches in residential zones.
Isn't that what that says? It should be, also be noted that the churches are allowed in all zoning districts with a minimum lot size of three acres.
And so what is, what is your issue or observation?
If we reduce the three acre for the church lot, then it would affect this.
I don't think it will affect this. I mean, the.
We need to take that three acre though.
This is, this is just a discussion paper. This is not an ordinance. This is just a topic for conversation, has no bearing in rule.
So I don't think there's anything pertaining to the three acre or the five acre requirement for the churches that would affect the daycare discussion. And so we'll take your feedback from tonight and we'll put it in ordinance form for you to consider at your next meeting. And certainly you can adjust that in any way you'd like. But I think, I think we got the key input from you that we needed to prepare something more formal for you to consider.
All right. Next, next board meeting commissioner's meeting, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Who would like to report to the Board of Commissioners?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. That was easy. Between him and me, and you spoke, didn't you?
Yeah.
Schedule two.
Okay.
We were too quick for you.
Okay, the next planning board meeting will be Tuesday, April fifteenth. Everybody agree? Six P M.
Yep. Yep, sixteen, at six P M, right?
Six P M.
Yep.
Thanks for changing that too, by the way. Town staff comment?
Just a few things. One is the commercial site plan for the commercial property on Taylor and Ocean Road next to the Cape Carteret Aquatic and Wellness Center. They are working to amend their plans. They were not ready to present to you tonight. We do expect that that will be on your April fifteenth meeting agenda. So they are working through some issues that were identified at the planning board meeting last time and also trying to come up with a plan that's more acceptable. So I expect that'll be on April fifteenth. The, the Board of Commissioners approved the ordinance amendment creating alternate planning board member slots, and they advertised for alternate planning board members. They have extended the deadline for applications to April the seventh. So I would expect that they'll make those appointments at their meeting on April fourteenth, and hopefully we'll have those two individuals here on the fifteenth, depending on what their availability is. So that's coming. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is the, we do need to go back and revisit the E T J language that we talked about in the planning board section of the U D O, just to comply with state law. We're not going to change the substance of it, I don't think. But we've got to come back and make some tweaks to that language, and we'll present that to you at your April fifteenth meeting as well.
Sure.
Just a couple of items. The community rating system review will be conducted on May seventh. That's for the flood insurance rating. We've mentioned before that we're at an eight. Hopefully we'll stay at an eight, ten percent off, I guess. And gives us an opportunity to have our whole program reviewed and maybe we'll be able to improve it, so. And then also for next month, we'll have the pre-existing small cemeteries for discussion. That was the next topic, pre-existing small cemeteries.
Oh, the small cemetery.
Yeah, your next discussion topic.
No, we have one in Bay Shore. I don't know where the other one is.
There's one. Yep. And Hunter Brown Lane is another one.
So you're planning your land.
Hunter Brown Lane, Hunter Brown Drive.
Oh, really?
Oh, there's one there?
Yeah.
Okay, because there's one up on fifty-eight also.
Yeah.
Okay, planters.
Across from the entrance to Star. It's where my, a lot of my family's been.
Okay. What's the name of the graveyard?
The Brown, Brown Holland Cemetery, something like that. Dudley's, Holland's, Browns.
There's another one at Byer Park, isn't it? Fifty-eight?
Ponders.
Pyers, Pyers Cemetery.
Yeah.
Lot of people, huh?
I know that there's, I know there's some, was some new language came down from Kama about permits and stuff like that. Are we going to address that at any, you know, just talk about it at any time and?
I can send that out to you. I've got it.
Yeah, I actually have it too.
Okay, but basically, if you have to repair up here, you do not need a permit. It's exempt.
So are we still, but do you still have to get a permit through the town is my question. So in other words, and I guess this is where I'm, the reason I'm asking it. So if, if Kama's not requiring a permit and you're not having to get a permit from somewhere else, so you're still having to get a permit from the town to do a repair? And is that going to stay the same change? We looking at any of that?
I did issue a permit for a pier that was repaired. However, we want to discuss all of those things related to marinas and piers and boat docks. And that's going to be a discussion topic as we move along.
Okay.
There were four topics and that was.
Hopefully, pretty soon, because I know we're getting into that time when people are going to start wanting to repair, you know, their, their piers for the season coming up. Just asking if that's something, maybe we can.
We took that back in from the county, correct?
Yeah, we, we issue Kama permits and Kama exemptions, now Kama minor permits and exemptions. You know, generally our approach, and we do need to amend the U D O to address this, but we would very much like the U D O to basically mirror the Kama regulations and not include any additional regulations, with the exception of whether or not you have some sort of commercial boat ramp or commercial marina or something like that. But we would like the U D O to just mirror the Kama regulations. So that's, we're tracking with you.
Okay, so I'm just making sure that somebody, you know, don't get a permit or gets a permit and, you know, how we figure out that all, if it's tracked down from Kama that you don't have to have it, then we shouldn't have to have one through the town either.
Yeah, we'll just mirror county. Thank you, Julie. Anything else?
That's it.
Frank, may I ask your question? Have you put the no wakes out?
They're not out yet, but they're in process. We have a contractor lined up to do it. He just finished a bulkhead for us at Easy Street, and he's going to be placing the buoys very soon.
Maybe not in the middle of the channel this time.
Who is it?
Yeah, it's David Edwards, Coast to Coast Marine Construction. And he's, he's planning to do that. He's finishing up the neighboring bulkhead right now on Easy Street, and he should be doing that real soon, so.
But maybe on the edge of the channel this time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put them.
Instead of right in the middle.
Are they still sitting in your office?
Ryan Hutchinson has them at Public Works. They're not in my office anymore, so.
Do you want out the way for?
We've mentioned this briefly, but I am very grateful to Frank and the town staff and the commissioners for agreeing to remove the asphalt from private property on Channel View. But I'm eager to cooperate and help in any possible way with the town to locate and dedicate a public road from twenty-four to Section One Country Club Point.
Yeah, I would expect that we will retain a surveying firm, probably Tidewater Associates, since they've got some familiarity with this situation. You know, retain them, have them mark out a proposed right-of-way in that area. Let the adjacent property owners review that. If everyone's comfortable with that, we'll record that as part of the improvements that we make to the road and get everything correct.
If I'm not mistaken, their firm has done the surveys for the tracks of land.
Okay.
And if they could put them on a big piece of mylar and see if there's sixty feet between the parcels and see if there's fifty feet. Very thankful that that's going to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. And as part of that, we will probably retain them to basically survey the Quail Run area and identify a private street right-of-way in that area. But certainly we'll do all this in conjunction with the affected property owners and make sure everybody's comfortable.
Is there a timeline for that to be completed or when it's expected to begin?
Yeah, so it's on my list of things to do. I've got to start with the surveyors first, and then I've got to update the contractors quotes. So it's, it's not going to happen next week or even next month, but it's in process, and hopefully we'll get it done sometime this summer.
How many private roads do we have, Frank?
We've only got a handful. Cape Point is private street. There's a small section of Gemini and Star Hill that's private. There's a debate about Live Oak near the Sound. Golf and Dolphin Drive is private, Enterprise Drive is private. I think those are the main ones. Yeah, we do not claim them as power build, so. But the vast majority of streets in town are public.
Cape Point, I forget, was it public or private?
That's private, yeah. Cape Point's, that's the largest collection of private streets. And then Hunter, Hunter Brown Drive is not really a platted right-of-way, but that's private.
It's just a dirt path.
Yeah.
Why is that private? Have we ever confirmed about making it?
I don't think anything's ever been recorded there. It's just a historical path used by the property owners. And that may be something in the future to look at establishing something, but.
Oh, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Not a dirt track.
Yeah, not a dirt track. It's to get all them through there, yeah, you.
Okay, y'all. Take another bar. Someone say anything else? You can keep it if you wish.
Oh, thank you.
Can I make a motion with adjourn?
Okay, adjourn, second adjourn, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.